I'd like to call order the regular city council meeting of Monday, April 12, 2010, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Councilmembers Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Absent.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here. Uh, we have, now we have invocation. I don't see Pastor Thomas Butler, so probably not, maybe we didn't tell him it was gonna be at 2:00, so. I apologize for that. Uh, if you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Uh, Mr. Carey, would you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I would think Pastor Butler will be here at 3:00, so we'll stop the meeting and have him do the invocation then. We don't want to miss one of those. Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. Uh, I want to let everybody know that we're gonna withdraw 6.6, or whoever makes a motion, if you can make that part of the motion, please, I'd appreciate it. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of March 22, 2010. Any additions or corrections? Oh, alright, we'll do that in 1 minute. Thanks. Uh, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ratty. Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move back to, uh, comments from the public. I don't have any speaking cards. Anyone in the public would like to speak on their comments from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to announcements and presentations. Proclamation, 4.1 proclamation, Crime Victims Rights Week. Is there someone here to accept this? Just come on down and give us your name for the record, then I'll read the proclamation.
Hey, I'm Jennifer Hart, the victim advocate of Sparks Police Department, and also member of Alliance for Victims' Rights.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas residents of Sparks dial 911 or Communication Section for help in emergencies and on a routine basis, and whereas the men and women who answer these calls gather vital information and dispatch public safety assistance, often making-
That's the next one.
Oh, you want me to do the Crimes Victims Rights Week? Alright, well, I'm just moving into the next one. Whereas 21 million Americans are victims of crime each year, and victims may suffer emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result of crime, and whereas the Victims of Crime Act, V.O.C.A., passed by Congress in 1984 affirmed a national commitment to helping victims rebuild their lives by establishing the Crime Victims Fund, a major source of funding for services and compensation to victims of crime throughout the United States. And whereas the Crime Victims Fund supports more than 4,400 state and local victim assistance programs, including rape crisis centers, domestic violence shelters, victim assistance in law enforcement and prosecutor offices, and other direct service providers that help millions of victims every year, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity for our country to recognize the Victims of Crime Act as a major bedrock of support for victim services, and to reaffirm our commitment to addressing the needs of victims of crime, and whereas the City of Sparks is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens in Sparks and across America to observe the 21st anniversary of VOCA during National Crimes Victims Rights Week. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 18 through the 24th, 2010, Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm the commitment of the City of Sparks to helping victims of crime rebuild their lives through supportive services and victim compensation during National Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the- thank you. Please say a few words, Jennifer.
Okay. Um, just thank you for recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week, and I'd also like to invite people to attend the Candlelight Vigil on April 21st at 5:30 at the Millsby Lane Justice Center in 1 South Sierra Street. At that event, we will be having, uh, our Steve Kiefer speak at that event, and I will also be receiving an award for outstanding advocate at that, so I'd appreciate your support.
Congratulations. Just start in the middle. Start in the middle on this one? Okay, next is proclamation, Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Someone here to accept this?
Yes.
And give me your name for the record, and-
Mayor Crandall Emergency Communications Dispatcher.
Very welcome, thank you. City of Sparks proclamation, whereas residents of Sparks- sounds familiar probably, this one, huh? Residents of Sparks dial 911 or Communication Section for help in emergencies on routine basis, and whereas the men and women who answer these calls gather vital information and dispatch public safety assistance, often making the difference between life and death, and whereas our emergency communications dispatchers are among the more than 500,000 telecommunications specialists who work daily to protect the public and promote public safety, and whereas our emergency communications dispatchers are the first contact for a person in crisis and are knowledgeable, highly trained employees who work very closely with police, fire, and emergency medical personnel, and whereas Sparks residents enjoy a high standard of public safety and owe a great debt to the emergency communications personnel who apply their expertise in dispatching help to ensure public safety. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 11 through the 17th, 2010, Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and join with the city council in acknowledging and thanking our public safety dispatchers. Joanna Bellamy, Amy Brown, David Brown, Lisa R. Buckles, Mary Crandall, Maureen Dayette, Mary Hale, Lori Howard, Melissa Nabong, Nancy Owens, Shelley Ricketts, Lisa Rose Brown, Cheryl Sluice- probably butchered that one- Sherry Terry and Dennis Wagner. Thank you very much. If you would, sir, Mary.
I'm not sure. Um, we definitely work hard for the city. We appreciate any of this type of thing. Um, we're inside here, is what everyone tells us, but we've served our job because we're doing it.
Thanks for all you do, we appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item, 5.1 through 5.10? Mr. Salerno.
Uh, yes, 5.7.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, looking for a motion to approve the rest. Mr. Smith.
Moved by- Uh, wrong one here. Moved to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.6 and 5.8 through 10.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the consent items other than 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 5.7, Mr. Salerno.
Uh, yes, I'll let the record show that I have to abstain on 5.7, as I have a business relationship with, uh, Garrett and Berry Construction.
Okay. Alright, anyone else looking for a motion? Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve consent item 5.7.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, uh, 4, 0 with 1 abstention. Alright. Okay, let's move on to general business items, 6.1. Consideration and possible appointment of Becky Stock to the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Gino Martini has placed before the city council the nomination of Becky Stock to the Truckee River Advisory Fund. Uh, this is a particularly important, uh, appointment to the City of Sparks, as they do have a, an opportunity to award enhancement funds for improving, uh, conditions and recreation opportunities along the river. Uh, Becky Stock comes to you from the Nevada Land Conservancy and, uh, shows the skills and, uh, and, uh, background that would make her a good candidate, as suggested by the mayor. Your action is requested now.
Not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I think Becky would do a great job by move to confirm the appointment of Becky Stock to the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Connects to 6.2. Consideration and possible approval of reappointments to the Western Regional Water Commission to represent the city council and the joint Sparks Reno representative for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, yes. This is a request to reappoint, uh, Mayor Gino Martini as the representative of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and Councilman Ron Smith as the City of Sparks representative, uh, for a second, two-year term. Uh, I do apologize, there should have been no financial impact, but, uh, I did get a little, little overzealous in, uh, in including that amount, but, uh, there is no financial impact.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. I was trying to figure out where I missed out on that, for being on there, too.
And especially you, being the chairman, you should get double that, I think, Mike. Any other questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Ms. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to reappoint, uh, Councilman Ron Smith as our Western Regional Water Commission, uh, Commissioner from the Sparks City Council, and ratify and reconfirm the appointment of Mayor Gino Martini as the Town Morse Commissioner.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to, uh, confirm the appointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving right along to 6.3. Consideration and possible approval of allocating $7,500 to Roadshows Inc. for the Spring Rally. $15,000 to John and Squawker's Nugget for Star Spangled Sparks, $22.5 to the Nugget for the Cook-Off, $5,000 to the Nugget for the portion of shuttle bus expense, $37.5 to Parks and Rec. for Department for Arts and Bloom, Farmers Market at Hometown Christmas, and $7,500 to Western State's Police and Fire Games paid from the Tourism and Marketing Fund. Who's doing this, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Tourism and Marketing Committee did open it, applications this year, did review them, uh, in looking at their budget, uh, they've chosen toward $95,000 for this, uh, summer's activities, and, uh, this item has, uh, been approved unanimously by that committee, and it's recommended for your approval. Uh, Councilman Ron Schmidt and Councilman Ron Smith both serve on this, and they may have some comments.
Questions? Mr. Salerno.
Uh, yes, once again, let the record show I'll be abstaining from this, as the, uh, John and Squawker's Nugget, uh, is a customer of mine.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for information for the council, that this, uh, funding again represents about half of where we were at in 2007, with the tourism marketing, a little more than half of, uh, at that time. We've continued with a conservative budget, um, with, with our, uh, funding for these organizations, but I also need to note that we will be dipping into reserves with this. Our anticipated, as of March, our anticipated revenues from the RSCVA is only around $68,000 with this item and the, and the following item, which is a, a change, uh, we're, we're asking to be made, we will be dipping the, uh, reserves, but we still have about approximately $390,000 in reserves to, uh, to cover this, and, uh, still can fund for a couple of years if we went down to zero balance, uh, from the RSCVA. Couple of, uh, changes we've made, uh, this year with these particular items, is that we have lumped the Park and Rec. Department all into one group, allowing them to go ahead and make the decisions for the, uh, the funding as they see fit for, uh, the City of Sparks events, and give them a little bit more latitude, um, for them. We also reduced the bus portion for the Nugget, but we're also looking at supplementing that in the coming months with, uh, the City of Sparks buses, and once we get the program up and rolling. So, those are the important changes, uh, this year on the program.
Any other questions?
I may also point out, we still have, the, the next item is conjunction of a, of a, a major change we're doing with the Sparks Chamber of Commerce.
Questions? Motion? Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve the funding allocations as listed for the events of the 2010 special events.
Ms. Carrigan.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve, agenda item 6.3 is outlined. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4, 0 with 1 abstention. Okay, 6.4 is review and possible approval of a $10,000 corporate sponsorship with the Sparks Chamber of Commerce paid from the Tourism and Marketing Fund. Mr. Carey.
Thank you. Um, this is, uh, as Ron mentioned, a, an item which would change from sponsoring, uh, the Chamber of Commerce event at the marina to an annual, uh, more focused, uh, corporate sponsorship between the City of Sparks and the Chamber of Commerce. As many of you know, the Chamber of Commerce has, uh, long been a focus point for tourism, as they are an tourist information center, and, um, we think that, uh, this provides an opportunity for the name of the City of Sparks to be interwoven with a larger marketing base, and will have the overall impact of improving, uh, the, uh, City of Sparks in its tourism and marketing efforts. Uh, this item was considered by the Tourism and Marketing Committee and is recommended for your approval here tonight.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just, uh, I agree with everything with, uh, Mr. Carey said, and this, this item was approved not only by us, but also in joint with Sparks Chamber of Commerce, uh, through the discussions of their allocation. There was a couple of issues that the Sparks Tourism Marketing, uh, Committee had as far as long-term exposure, but we were basically doing $10,000 for 6 hours exposure. Uh, by doing it this direction, we get exposure 365 days a year on every event the, uh, Chamber has, and we also, um, could be working with the Chamber to make sure we, uh, we cater all these funds to tourism, marketing, advertising for the city, signage, all that type of thing. So it's same amount of funds as we'd be spending on the 4th of July Festival, but now it's sponsorship 365 days a year. Thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
Just curious if this, at that $10,000 corporate sponsorship level, if you get a membership with the Chamber included?
Something we'll have to ask, I, you know, I'm not sure.
I know how that's, I know that's how some associations will organize their larger levels of sponsorship, so if that's the case, then we, uh, might be making some savings on dues in the future as well.
You know, I, I will, uh, certainly follow that up. I was planning on bringing forward, uh, the, uh, annual item, uh, seeking your direction on, on boards such as the Chamber of Commerce, so, um, I'll include an answer at that time for you.
Good. Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, no other comments. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve the corporate sponsorship for $10,000 with the Sparks Chamber of Commerce for 2010.
Mr. Carrigan.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve, uh, Carrigan to approve 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.5. Presentation and possible direction on the 2010 Public Attitude Survey. Ms. Gardner.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Teresa Gardner, administrative analyst, and I'm here today to present the results of the 2010 Public Attitude Survey. Okay, the survey was conducted March 3rd through March 5th. Took us three days to conduct the survey. We used the Regional Emergency Operations Center up on Spectrum to hold the survey center. We received 506 responses out of 7,568 phone calls, giving us a 6.7% response rate. This survey does achieve a 95% confidence level with a 4.3 confidence interval. The phone numbers were from the Washto County Voter Registration Database and was evenly split among all five wards. The survey surveyed adults, and they were Sparks residents. The phone numbers were randomly selected electronically, and we had one little phone glitch and dropped a few phone calls, so any citizens out there that got disconnected halfway, we're sorry for that, but other than that, the survey went off pretty well. Um, the questions are consistent with the International City County Management Association Comparative Performance Measurement data report that we also participate in, and this year again, we use volunteers. We were able to complete 100% of the survey with volunteers this year. There was 287 volunteer hours, and this reduced our survey cost to less than $450. I'd like to take a moment to introduce the survey volunteers, if I may. Um, I know at least one's here, and I didn't see if anyone else showed up, but if I say your name and you are here, please stand. Um, we had five repeat volunteer surveyors, second year in a row. One of those is an employee, Colin Bancroft, and then the others were Bill Brainard, Carol Driscoll, Emily Gardner, and Roger Slug. Not sure, thought Roger was gonna be here. Um, in addition, we had three other employees that gave their personal time, and that was Sean Carey, Andy Flock, and Andre Stigall. And then our other committed volunteers, um, were Cynthia Ayala, Lonnie Kea Banner, Marilyn Brainard, Lizeth Cheraboga, Kathy Crawford, Michelle Fedor, Josue Gaetan Garcia, Daniel Lewis, Zach McCall, Morgan Pintar, Jacqueline Sanchez, Jacob Severson, Claudia Bancroft, Norm Burge, here, Scott Carey, Jennifer Cochrane, Taylor Dees, Alana Garmon, Rachel Goforth, Jake McCall, Gail Pfeifer, Chuck Sanchez, and Mark Stevenson. We had a lot of fun, and they did great work to get that survey completed. In addition, I'd like to, to thank our IT department, Dave Crutchley, um, really helped with setup, and the network support, and Rich Brown with the software development. Each year we make some improvements, and it gets easier and easier. And for volunteer recruitment, Alex Mendoza from the Police Department really helps to, um, put the word out to his group, and we get a lot of volunteers from there, and Zach Bankston, our intern that we had for a short time, he was recruiting from UNR for us, so I appreciate that. Okay, the top six citizen concerns, um, the top six stayed relatively the same, there was just a slight adjustment from last year. Education and schools moved up to fourth from sixth, so your top six are unemployment, the housing market foreclosures, city budget reduction in services, education in schools, traffic congestion, and graffiti. And for the most part, each of the wards, these were the top six in each one. They may have been adjusted a little bit, with the exception of Ward 1, they were a little less concerned about traffic, and they had redevelopment in their top six. Satisfaction of city services, this is the percentage of those that responded that said excellent or good, and with the exception of police, the rest of the services were rated somewhat lower. The good to service was reduced, and police slightly increased. Traffic congestion was, um, the fifth concern in 2010. It was fourth in 2009, so that moved down a little bit. You'll see the breakdown of some of the things we asked about. Traffic signals during non-commune hours, traffic signals during commute hours, pedestrian bicycle traffic, and public transportation, and all of those were slightly down this year from last year. The quality of life measurements, um, remained pretty stable from last year, and that was measuring the overall quality of life, Sparks as a place to live, the overall appearance of Sparks, your neighborhood as a place to live, and access to affordable, quality housing. You'll see there was relatively no change in those numbers. Parks and Recreation, mostly declines here between 4% to 7%, and that's just of those who responded to the question. 18% of the 506 surveys did not answer that question, and last year we had 14% who did Special Events, this is the percentage of respondents who say they have attended the event, and we have, um, a mixture of some had a little more attendance, some a little less. The largest margin there is 5% for the Rib Cook-Off, with greater attendance this year than last year. And then next we have, um, this, all of the surveys, survey callers' favorite item to ask on this survey was if anybody attended Paddle, Pedal, Patter Kids Triathlon, and you'll see that that did increase.
Being able to say it should increase it.
And we have a series of growth questions, um, population, job, and retail, and you'll see that, on the population growth, was relatively stable the last three, three years of residents feeling that the growth was too fast, and that has dropped 10 to 11 points this year. They no longer feel that our population growth is too fast. Job growth is the most significant number. It's doubled in 2009, and then continued to- It's doubled in 2009 and then continued to climb another 8%, saying that our job growth is too slow. The percentage of citizens participating in city government, we show an increase in those residents that are volunteering their time, and that would be either with city government or with some organization within the city. But a few less are watching our government meeting on TV or attending our government We asked four miscellaneous questions, and the first one, would you support an increase in sales tax dedicated to support the hiring and equipping of additional police officers? 69% of those responding are in support of that. Would you support having one consolidated government for all Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County? 67% of residents are not in favor of the consolidation. Would you support the city in its efforts to create a unique identity to market and promote to the region in order to increase tourism? We have 74% of the respondents that support that. And are sustainability, grain technology, and environmental issues important to you? 83% of residents are concerned with that, and that's up from 78 last year, which was the first we asked that. Citizens were asked to rate the overall quality of services in Sparks. You'll see here back through 2004, the trend. This year, we did lose seven percentage points, which I don't think is going to surprise any of us with the cuts in budgets and resources. Citizens were also asked the overall quality of life, and the percentage of those that feel Sparks has an excellent to good quality of life is 89, just slightly down, only 1% from last year. And 92% of our residents believe Sparks is an excellent goods place to live, remains unchanged from last year. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Teresa. Teresa, thanks for all that you did to get this signed. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, and thanks to all the volunteers. Howard, thank you so much for being here. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was Teresa. This is just my comments. You know, this is really good information for the council to continue making decisions on how we do things, and I thank you for you and all the volunteers for the time and effort they put into it. Though we get blasted by a few groups out there with our numbers that we don't do our surveys right and everything else like that, I think statistically they're going to be hard to beat, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't think there's real, any real surprises there with, from the things that I saw anyway from me. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thanks, Teresa.
I did put some survey reports out on the table if there was anybody in the audience that was interested.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 6.6 has been withdrawn. 6.7, consideration and discussion of the city's current policies and procedures concerning the collection of delinquent sewer accounts. Mr. Cronk?
Hello.
Ms. Boland, welcome.
For the record, Jeff Cronk, City Finance Director. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're here today just to kind of present to you an opportunity to review and discuss our sewer collection procedures. The Revenue Division is in charge of enforcing all our policies and procedures, as you well know. So with me today is Elise Boland, who is our Division Manager for our Revenue Division, and she can talk to you and answer most of your questions. She is our resident expert. She's been doing it for many years. But with that, we wanted to just kind of give you kind of a very brief history of our procedures, and then just kind of open it up for discussion and your review, and you know, we're here to answer any questions. There's not an action that we're requesting today. This is really just an idea to bring before you to discuss and review, and if there is, to see if there is an appetite to change some of our procedures. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elise, and just to kind of give you a brief history and kind of what we're doing right now.
As you note, in 1980, the council approved an ordinance that would let us lean the properties for non-payment of sewer. And in 88, they decided that we needed also penalize the customers who were not paying, trying to get them an incentive to pay. That was compounded at that point, and in 91, the council decided that that was too high. I think the compounding of delinquent sewer became quite significant, quite high. In 1999, we approached council and asked them if we could transfer our delinquent sewer accounts to the county and have them collected on the property taxes to try to get our sewer funds paid, and that was approved, and we have been doing that since then. Our normal procedure in our office is to take any account that's six months delinquent and place a lien on it. Before we do that, we make sure that we research the assessor's office to make sure that we have the proper owner of that property. A lot of times, people don't tell us that they've moved, or that they've done a short sale, or have turned the property over to someone else. So we have a diligent effort to make sure that we are billing the correct owner and finding the correct owners before we put, place a lien on their property.
One second, Elise, we have a question. Do you want to wait? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then after a year, we are now able to transfer those delinquent sewer accounts to the county, but before we do that, we send a letter to the customer saying, you are in jeopardy of having your account sent to the county to be collected on the property taxes. You have about a month to respond to us and entertain a payment plan, or you know, give a reason why that shouldn't be transferred, or work with the Sewer Appeals Committee in trying to work with the city to bring your account current. If we don't get a response from them, they are transferred to the county to be collected on the next year's property taxes. So that's kind of how we're trying to deal with the issues of delinquents here. Have any questions?
Questions. Mr. Salerno?
Yeah, can you explain to me the rationale? Residential accounts that become delinquent after one quarter or assessed 25% late charge, but commercial accounts that become delinquent after one month, they're assessed an 8.3 late, 3% late charge. Why the big difference?
Well, in essence, the residential account is also assessed 8.33 if you take it on a monthly basis. We only bill them quarter.
Oh, you're billing business accounts a different...
Correct. Business accounts are billed monthly based on the consumption from Tummo.
Okay. I wasn't aware that that's how you guys did your billing.
Question, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back to something you said, because it appears to be different than what the testimony was from the case that originated for this request. You're saying we no longer compound the penalties?
Correct.
But the case that came before us showed compounded penalties.
They were on the account from years ago, before 1991, there were compounded penalties on that account. But most accounts or most customers who come to either the Sewer Appeals Committee or are within that 150 limit that the Finance Director can waive, their penalties, if they will entertain a payment plan with us, their penalties are virtually waived by the city. It's always been the contention of the city not to collect, I mean, we're not in the business to collect penalties. We're in the business to collect our sewer fees.
Right. The case that came before us was very recent. The guy was almost two years, but out of the $8,000 he owed, like $6,000 of that was penalties to the city.
He actually had not paid his sewer account in probably five or six years.
Okay.
And there were several units on that. That was a complex.
Okay. I'm just going to buy what drove the conversation, and nobody disagreed with it at that time. So you're saying that he did not have penalties on that account, was not compounded, he was just...
It was still on there as being compounded, Mr. Schmidt, but he had applied for a penalty waiver with the committee, and he had been granted that, but in the meantime, he'd still not paid his fees. And I think that's why it became a lien, and that's why it became so cumbersome, in a sense. But his payment plan included, and I don't know the exact dollar amount, that once he's satisfied, his payment plan, the city was willing to waive all of those penalties. And that's typically what we do in any conversations that we have with customers. We're here to collect the fees.
So, just kind of, maybe so I can understand a little better, if you're delinquent for three months, there's a 25% late fee.
Correct.
Now, when that happens, you're probably going to go another three more months. There's another 25% on that next three months, but not another 25% on the previous three months again. So each quarter, you get a 25% penalty on those three months?
No. It's on the full amount that's delinquent.
The outstanding balance.
The outstanding balance. But not on the penalties that we've already assessed penalties on.
Okay, all right. And then it appears that we only go after commercial accounts in April.
For...
It says in April of each year, commercial accounts that are one-year delinquent, we go after residential after four months.
No, the commercial accounts are also assessed penalties every month, but they are also in the same loop with the residential accounts in that April. We look at them to make sure that we need to, if they're a year delinquent, we will also include them in the transfer to the county.
So we don't transfer any accounts till April?
Correct. Well, we actually transfer them in May with a, an opportunity to pull back any account through June, the first part of June, before the county assessor sends their files to a printer to do their tax bills. So we have about, I'd have to say, 45-day timeframe that we can look at the accounts, try to work with the customers before we say, we call it a drop dead date. We can't take anything back at that point. But the commercial accounts are looked at and assessed on a monthly basis also.
Yes, I guess my last question, with the 25% late fee or 8% charge, how does that compare to other communities, whether sewer or any other? Do we have any usury laws in the state of Nevada that would tell us how, what the maximum? Because that's like, you know, if you do an interest rate on that, you know, you're pretty high interest rate at 8.3% a month. We would probably be looking real negative as a government if we had a business in town that was doing something like that, you know? 1.5% late fee is a common, most contracts that I review. I've never seen an 8.3% late fee. You know, how does that, are we violating any state laws here? Do we, what's, just seems to be real high.
I can look into that for you, or have the city attorney's office look into that. I don't think that there is anything. I believe Reno probably, I think they charge the same, and on top of that, they, even if they enter into a payment plan with a customer, they don't hold the penalties, and they keep assessing penalties. When we place a customer on a payment plan, we actually will freeze their account from penalties, and we will only charge the additional service fees, and we do not penalize them further if they continue to make payments with us.
My concern is just perception. I mean, in reality, if, you know, if we had a business come in front of us that was charging 8.3% a month late fees, we'd probably be looking pretty negative with that business as being gouging the public on out there. But we freely do it as a government, and I think we should be questioning ourselves if we hold ourselves the same standard that we're asking businesses to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? You know, I don't know that it's excessive or not. I know we're pretty lenient when it comes to the people that come in and talk to us and ask for help. We're very willing to help them. And, you know, I sit on that committee, and, you know, we're not ogres. We're not trying to, I mean, I understand, people are hurting, and, but there's got to be some kind of a penalty here somewhere. And I don't know that 8.3 is the right one, or 10.8, or 6.5. I don't know what's right, but I don't think we're overly aggressive in trying to correct and collect them, so I don't think it's that bad. You know, people have to understand that, you know, our sewer system needs to be paid for, and if nobody pays, then we don't have a sewer system, and ends up where the people that do pay are going to have to pay more. So, and we can't shut somebody's sewer off. It's a health hazard, and we can't do it like somebody shut the electricity or shuts the water. There's nothing we can do. We have no hammer over people, so. But you might want to look at and see what other cities do, and let us know, let the council know what other cities do and what their practices are, and we find, we may find out we're pretty lenient.
Yeah, certainly do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Adams.
The municipal court allows us to go to a small claims court to actually litigate these. In the past, it's always been the direction from the city council that they do not want law offices going to small claims court to litigate these delinquencies. Is that still the position of the city council?
Would be for my, I don't know that we need to be taking our time litigating sewer appeals, but that's, anybody else want to weigh in on that?
City of Reno charges $340.23 for single-family home flat rates. Is that about in line with us?
We're actually lower than they are.
That's their penalty check?
No, that's just for toll fees.
Sewer.
Oh.
That's their fee. Quarterly?
No.
Yearly. Yeah, they charge $84.24 a quarter for the first three quarters, and the last quarter is $87.51. I don't see anything in here for penalties.
Don't see anything about penalties?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, you might want to look into, maybe Reno, maybe Vegas, maybe something that, I mean, you don't need to spend all your time doing it, but maybe get a report out to the council so we know what other cities are charging, and find out if we're in line or not in line.
Yes, sir.
We can take some kind of action if we're way out of line. Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, there's nothing else you can do with sewer except for fighting, because if you have a water problem, like from Tummo, you can shut the water off, you can't shut the sewer off.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, and so basically, that's the only thing you can do if somebody's delinquent, and, I mean, that's the only option.
We don't have, we don't have any leverage, so. Okay. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, 6.8, Request from Regional Planning Governing Board for Consideration and Possible Adoption by the Spark City Council of an Addendum to the 1990 Interlocal Agreement to Designate the Executive Director of Regional Planning as a Depository Manager in place of the City of Sparks. Joy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Joy Randall from Regional Planning. You have before you the request to sign the addendum to the interlocal agreement. This allows us to take the deposits from each of the local jurisdictions. It's part of our budget funding, and it is one step in the administrative steps that need to be taken in order to bring our finance and accounting in-house, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Just a function of taking the finance and stuff away from the City of Sparks, you guys are going to do it all in-house, so we don't have to worry about that anymore.
You do not have to worry about that anymore, and we're planning on being set up and online to do that on our own by June 1.
Good. Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
I don't have a question. I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Please.
Make the motion that we approve.
Do we have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 6.8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.9, Presentation Discussion and Possible Direction Regarding the Regional Transportation Commission Findings for Sound Mitigation Along Vista Boulevard Widening Project. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Doug Malloy, I am not Garth Olksell. Garth had to be out of town this week, is spring break, and he was planning to handle this. I am the project manager, though, for the Vista Boulevard Widening. Garth's been, he's offered to help steward this item along, because it needs some specific attention, and there's a little bit of history with it, so Garth's been helping out with that. The plan here is just to provide a brief presentation, and of course, the staff report looks to get your direction and recommendations on the information provided. Just a little bit of background. So, just a little background. We, this project was ready to go out the door about this time last year. We had done some sound analysis for some work. Whenever we do widening, we take a look at noise impacts, and I'll touch on that briefly. Of course, the packet has some information in there. Appendix A is written about public comments that we've received. Emails are, Appendix B and C are some petitions that have been provided by residents of both Winfield Springs and the vistas. I wanted to note, if I could, in the agenda, staff report, barriers 5, 6, 7, and 8, there's just a... six, seven, and eight, there's just a, a change that needs to be made there. Barrier five is up against Wingfield Springs, as is, excuse me, barrier five is up against Wingfield Springs, not the fairways as it's indicated. And then barrier six, seven, and eight are in the area of the fairways HOA. So I just wanted to make that clarification. So just briefly, our noise policy, when we, we look at noise abatement, when we're, it's part of our, our policy, which has been adopted based on federal regulations and state of Nevada policy. So it's a, it's a policy that's pretty common in this area. When a new roadway is approved, in other words, for building a new road, or for widening and doing significant changes to a road, if there isn't prior knowledge that that road was going to be built before homes or subdivisions were built, we, we have a responsibility to look at noise mitigation. You'll hear prior knowledge several times throughout this presentation. And I'll, I'll just briefly say that in the area of the vistas, there was not prior knowledge. That development was there before Vista was envisioned, and certainly envisioned to be a four-lane facility. That is not the case at Wingfield Springs. Noise abatement, if it provides a minimum five decibel reduction, if it's feasible and reasonable, we continue to look at providing some kind of noise mitigation. Some of the exceptions are, we do not build sound walls or, or noise mitigation for undeveloped land, future development. It's only looking at base, base of homes, it's not looking at the second floor. It's not built if it's a, creates an unsafe situation, we don't, we don't look at it any further. And it's not built if the majority of the people are in opposition or indifferent.
Twenty-five cents.
This project was congestion relief project. We added lanes, and actually, it's been kind of phased, and I think it needs to be pointed out, that in the area near the vistas, I did a project two years ago, two thousand and seven, finished up an intersection project there at Los Altos and Vista. And when we did that, we added a lane. Folks were asking me at that time, what kind of noise mitigation we might be looking at, and I, I told them we were going to defer the sound study until the actual full widening project from Los Altos all the way out to Wingfield Parkway. The noise study identified eight sound barrier locations. As you can see, three at the north Los Altos Parkway area, four near Wingfield Hills. The missing one is one that was on the west side of the road, near multifamily townhome there at Vista Del Rancho, and that was found early on, that it didn't meet the policy for other reasons. Outside, the noise projections were outside the twenty-year timeframe, and it wasn't real feasible to look at building a wall there, so we have eliminated that. So we're looking at three, three and four different barriers. Briefly, the first barrier, and I'll start from the south end of the project, this is closest to Los Altos. North is up on all of these slides, as you look, look upon them. Barrier one, these folks again didn't have prior knowledge, and it's located, again, the barrier is more or less located on the property lines. Again, back to the time we, we were going out to bid on this project, just a little history, again, as we were accelerating the project with the RTC five funding that became available, we, we wanted to get this project out on the street, create some jobs, get, get the, a little stimulus to the economy. We had a wall designed. It was located in the right-of-way, up against the roadway, and in this location only, because again, it met the policy requirements. When we went to a public meeting, just a general public meeting about the project going out, there were several concerns brought up about the proximity of that wall, the cost of the wall, its, the maintenance issues associated with it. Some folks didn't like the idea that it was located up against the road. And so rather than delay the project, we went ahead, and although it was even out to bid, we pulled it out by addendum. We pulled the wall out of the project documents and proceeded forward with getting the roadwork moving ahead for this much-needed road. So I just wanted to mention that. So this is barrier one. Just some of the items on barrier one, six-foot sound wall proposed or would be, would be at the property line. And in this location, the property line is up against Vista Boulevard right-of-way line, so city of Sparks property at this location. Provides mitigation for eight homes, total cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, or about eighteen thousand dollars per home. Keep that eighteen thousand dollar per home in your minds, because this is kind of a, a weight that we look at, someone, something in the range of being feasible. So eighteen thousand is kind of a benchmark as we look at the other walls. This is just a visual rendering of the wall. Again, the edge of the road is where the wall was originally designed. We're now looking at something, if we, if this goes forward, we would be looking at putting it at the property line, replacing the fences that are somewhere in the area where the existing fences are. It's a textured wall panel system that we feel would be a pretty feasible wall to build. Barrier two is just north of that, picks up pretty much from the, where barrier one ended up. These are separated by drainage facilities, that's why they're separated. The proximity of the homes to the road are all fairly similar in these first three barriers that we're going to be looking at. This is up against Wingfield Springs, excuse me, vistas homeowners' association property, is the difference between this wall and the previous wall. Again, six-foot wall, homeowners' association property up against that, which would mean there, if, depending upon where it would be built, there would be some issues that we would need to deal with there. Provides mitigation for ten homes, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars is the estimated cost, about seventeen thousand per home, very similar to the other. In the case here, we, we know that the homeowners' association has indicated that they are not interested in maintaining or the liability associated if the wall is built at that location. Again, another rendering here in the, in the foreground is the area of wall number two. Just in the background, a little bit further will be the next wall. We don't have another photo of that, so I just wanted to point, point that out to you. That would be barrier, excuse me, yeah, barrier three. At barrier three location, there's some topography issues that cause some challenges with potentially building a wall at this location. So there's actually three, four, four alternatives we're, you know, taking a look at and considering if a wall is to be built. This first one bisects the property. You can see the property line in black. This would actually be somewhere at the top of a slope. It's a fairly steep slope. Their fences are located at the base of the slope, and you'll see that in the renderings. Again, it's supposed to be a six-foot wall, somewhere in the middle of the backyard, provides mitigation for six homes. Cost is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, or twenty-one thousand dollars per home. Again, compared to the other two walls, about the same range of cost. This is a rendering of what it would look like, leaving the fence in there. This, the challenges here, of course, is that it, it cuts off, would cut off a portion of these people's property, which is not, obviously not common practice. Barrier three B would be a wall that would need to be taller. It would be down at the property line, and this is, again, something to consider. This would need to be twelve-foot high. Obviously, the costs go up with that, and the range is about fifty thousand dollars per home of benefit. Maintaining a twelve-foot wall, obviously adds, there's adds to the maintenance concerns. That's a rendering, again, of the, the twelve-foot high wall at the base of the slope, toe, bottom of the slope. Please stop me if you have any questions. I'm trying to go through this for your benefit here as quickly as possible. Barrier three C, again, down at the property line. It's a combination of some retaining wall and a six-foot standard wall at the same location. Provides, again, mitigation for the six homes, about a hundred and eight thousand dollars per home, considerable expense. There's some drainage issues we could work out, but what this does is it actually provides some usable, more usable area to the property owners by raising up the slope and putting the wall, again, at their property line. This is a rendering of that. Similar in height to the other wall, actually, it would be a little bit taller. And I have a section that'll show you the four different options here in a moment. And the last of these barrier three locations is what we're calling three D. It's a little bit of a hybrid of doing some earthwork and putting the wall somewhat further away from the top of the slope, as was proposed with three A. So again, put some fill in, same mitigation of six homes, about thirty-one thousand dollars per home. And then the drainage issues are similar, but can be, can be worked out. And this is a rendering of that. So again, it's a little bit closer to the homes, but not as close as it was with the first alternative. This is just a section of the four, A, B, C, and D. To your right is A, where it's closest to the property. B and C are the ones down at the property line, and then D is somewhere in between with the fill, combination of fill and wall. So now we're moving to the area out towards Wingfield Springs. This is the Copper Hills subdivision on the south. Again, north is to the top of the, top of the screen. These areas, again, do not had, did have prior knowledge when these developments were approved of the, of the road being a four-lane Vista Boulevard. So this is basically just west of Wingfield Hills Road. It's about fifteen hundred feet long. A six-foot sound wall on the property line is actually backed up, it says right-of-way there, but it's actually up against the Wingfield Springs homeowners' association. So there's a buffer between the property lines and the city's right-of-way. That's the case with all these walls down here in this area. Provides mitigation for twenty-four homes at a cost of about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, or seventeen thousand dollars per home. And again, it mentions it doesn't meet the policy, the RTC's policy right now because of prior knowledge. Barrier six is just east of Wingfield Hills Road. This is the fairways homeowners' association area. Again, a buffer between the property line and the right-of-way. Six-foot wall here against the homeowners' association line would be mitigating six homes, ninety-two thousand dollars approximately, and at a cost of about fifteen thousand, five hundred per home. And I mentioned the prior knowledge. Barrier seven is a, a small wall that, because there's a break in the, there would need to be a break, I believe, in the wall because of a path that's located through there. This is just separated out, but it's essentially the same location. Costs on this, about thirty-one thousand. Let me just check my notes on this. It serves one home, but it's really, you can look at it as a part of the, the whole overall barrier six and seven. So if you, if you add those costs together, really, the, the net cost for mitigating this home plus the others and the other one is about seventeen thousand. So it's still in the range of feasibility as far as the costs go. And the last one is barrier eight. This is up against a, close to the golf course and multifamily properties there. I believe they're, I'm not sure the, the type designation of these, but they, they're like six units, I think, per, or six, yeah, six units per. Six-foot sound wall here, mitigation for a six, a multifamily six unit, thirty-five thousand, or about six thousand dollars per home. Again, prior knowledge is an issue. So with that, that's all I had. And as the item indicates, we're looking for some direction, recommendations based on the information here. If we have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put in a little perspective for the rest of the council, because I'll tell you what, what happened from my point of view. When we got the word that the Vista was going to be able to get widened, and there were going to be a sound wall, as I went up to the Vista homeowners' association, talked about the sound wall. Their homeowners' association said they were not interested in putting it down by the road, and also, they didn't, I said, well, we could possibly move it back to the back fence, and they said, we're not interested in that either. And so taking that knowledge, I was contacted by some people that live off of Wingfield Hills, and they were interested in having the sound wall put there. So Ron Smith and I went up and had a neighborhood meeting with them and said, okay, since the vistas do not want to do it, maybe there's a way we can transfer the money from the sound walls at the vistas to the sound walls on Vista right by Wingfield Hills Road. And then after that, some, some citizens came up from the vistas and said, no, we want our sound wall. And so we had already said that we would take a look at putting them in at Wingfield Hills. So I think that what happened, and then, and then subsequently, to that, I tried to get a letter from the Vista homeowners' association to just tell me, so I could bring it to the RTC, meaning that they did not want this to happen. And they said, because some of their citizens came forward, they weren't going to do that anymore. So the bottom line is this. The bottom line is they, that according to RTC, because the, the vistas did not have prior knowledge to the road going, that's the only place legally they have to do it, and I understand that. But Ron and I spent a lot of time talking to the citizens that live off of Wingfield Hills Road. So what I would like to do today is to do exactly what we had promised that we would try to do, and that is to put barrier one, two, and three A, and also barrier five. And that would be what I'd suggest. And barrier one is the, and that goes to the back fence. The Vista homeowners' association said they did not want to take, take care of it, but, so this is going to be an all or nothing. In other words, I think, when you look at three A, that's the only one that's cost-effective for those houses that are up on the slope. The other three walls, I think, aren't cost-effective. And to be real honest with you, the mayor said they reminded him of the Great Wall of China, that's how tall they are. So it is. But once again, you're splitting somebody's backyard, so you're going to have to get permission from them to do that. So it's once again, because we're moving this up to the back property line, it's going to be all or nothing. In other words, if one of the neighbors say, we don't want a wall, you can't put a sound wall up and then stop it. So from my point of view, and I, and I think, I talked to Ron about this, I'd like to see him take forward this request from the city council, and I'll make that my motion, is that we do ask the RTC to do barrier one, two, and three A, because that's legally what they have to do, with the caveat that the homeowners' association take care of the, the wall on the street side, because it is, in fact, on their property line. And barrier five is the only people we talked to in the, in the Wingfield Springs area were the ones that were living in those homes. And I know that's not in the budget, and I know it's not required, but that would be my request. And if it doesn't happen because of legal reasons, I guess it doesn't happen.
Can I just mention that?
Sure.
With regards to three A, I'm sure our board would not be interested in acquiring property or going through the process of condemnation or something along those lines to do, to do, to make that happen if that becomes an issue.
Right. And that's something that we need to tell the homeowners, because the other two, I think the other three options are not an option in my book. Because when you get to a hundred and eight thousand dollars for a wall, you can almost purchase the house for, you know, throw in another sixty-five thousand or whatever. I don't, I'm not sure what the houses are going for, but it's, to me, it's kind of ridiculous, because I think it's, it gets too cost-
Garth was handling, receiving the comments, and I, I apologize for not really checking through those completely, but I believe we did get comments from areas in the Wingfield Springs other than barrier five.
Yes, the not one of, I know one person that said something at the meeting, because I was there, but they were not in the initial conversation. And so what I'm saying is it's, it's going to be tough anyway to, to make this sell at the RTC board, because it's not, legally has to be done, and that's going to set a precedent. I understand that. But we promised that we would take this forward for those citizens. And it would have been okay, because I think it would have, it might have been okay from when the vista said they didn't want it, because you could have shifted the money up there. Now it's going to be twice as much money. I think it works out almost, one of them's, with my math, four hundred and eleven thousand to do it, and the other one's four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So it's going to be double the money, and I understand that. But I'm shooting for the moon right now.
Before we move along with questions, I have a letter here that I want to enter into the, to the record from Kay Speckles and Dylan Minnis. I don't know exactly what they, where they live. They live, well, I take that back. They live on Vista Boulevard near Wingfield Hills Drive.
Yeah, and we talked, that's the couple that we talked to.
Okay. They're in favor of sound walls, but they also have a PS on the bottom, they say they want eight feet.
Yeah, well, now we, you know, it's like the, the elephant's nose is in the, is in the tent now, the whole elephant's going to get in there. But, yeah, we talked to them, and they're, they're the ones that had the meeting with their neighbors, so.
Okay.
so.
Okay. So I just wanted to get that on the record, and I'll give that to Linda for the record.
And they went out and signed, Ron and I asked them to have a petition signed by everybody that lives on that, that street, and they did. So everybody, at least in that area, had signed a petition saying they wanted sound walls.
Okay. Next question, Ron Smith?
Well, not only that, the homeowner association signed off on that, too. But again, this is all before, we didn't think we were going to build anything by the Vista's. Now, on 3A, there is six or seven home, how many homeowners are in there? Six? And we needed agreement from all six of those to do any kind of a wall over there, and we didn't get that, did we?
I don't believe that, I honestly don't believe that we've sought that, other than maybe a petition or some letters and comments from them, I don't believe we've actually officially gone forward with trying to get an agreement in place.
Okay. Well, in my position in the RTC, I will take forward whatever this council wants me to. And I know staff recommendation from the RTC is not to approve five, six, seven, or eight.
True.
And so I'll take forward what the city council wants us to do. I agree with Mike, we were trying to do some people a favor by putting in walls when they didn't deserve them. We were fighting for that, and because we thought we had a savings, and now it's the whole thing or nothing, and it's, it's become a big mess. So whatever this council decides to do, I'll bring forward to the RTC, and it'll actually be in their hands to make the decision, we're just making a recommendation.
And that would be this Friday?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Would add further flies in the ointment here on section 3A. There may be some legal issues associated with minimum lot sizes, rear yard setbacks, valuations, and takings, so we'd like to have an opportunity to look at that before any final action is taken by the city council.
Yeah, you know, and I knew something like that was going to come up, because if you take a look at how those lots are set, it's almost, I mean, they're very high up, and I'm not even sure that a sound wall is going to make a difference or not, so.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Smith?
There is a possibility of putting a gate-like fixture in that, in that wall, also.
Yeah, there's been talk about getting some way, if that may met a legal requirement, providing access to.
So they wouldn't really lose that property, they just have a different access to it, and it doesn't look like they're using it anyway, but I mean, it is their property.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Well, then I'll go ahead, if there isn't any more discussion, I'll go ahead and try to make this into a motion somehow.
One second, we got one, one.
Just, I guess, just one clarification for me. So I understand the first half, because those are the ones that are legally required. So, but then there's five, six, seven, and eight, and you're only recommending five? And is that because we haven't heard from anybody from six, seven, or eight?
Well, it's also because it's not, the other two walls are very small, and the structures are two-story condos, I think, are in that area.
That's not entirely the case. At the very end, at eight, definitely two-story, but there are single-story homes in the other area, and their proximity is actually as close or closer to the road as some of the others. So although the sound levels are all very similar, and they all meet the requirements for, you know, sound mitigation, there are some single-family homes in that area, are single-story.
But to answer your question, yeah, I didn't, we did not hear from anybody. I personally did not hear from anybody. I know one person showed up at the RTC meeting that was held at the elementary school, and I talked to that person.
So I guess that would be my question, beyond the process, and I, you know, I applaud Ron and Mike for going out and trying to get some answers to these questions. Did anybody, through any other public process, either the emails or your public meetings from six, seven, and eight, ask for?
Yes. Well, I have to review the petition to see if the address is lined up with the Fairways residents. But my understanding is, yes, we've received comment from both locations, and some requesting, certainly requesting walls at both locations.
I mean, I'm going to guess what's going to happen, because I'm sure that the attorney for the RTC is going to be just like our attorney, and say, this legally doesn't have to be done, and if you do it, you set a precedence, so be careful. I'm sure that's what's going to be said, and I understand that. And that's, you know, but that would be the same thing as Chad telling us, you know, trying to protect us, too. So I'm sure that's probably what's going to be said. But my motion would be to take it forward and just to see what the RTC board would like.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one comment and a question. You know, this representative of the board has been trying to get sound walls in an old neighborhood for nine years now. My recommendation, it said, if there's any area that you get sound walls at this time, take it, because you're not going to get another chance. I mean, it, there isn't money on out there for sound walls, and that's at least my question. Money, you're obligated, under federal standards, to do this in a widening project, offer sound walls, correct? And it's being paid for in RTC five monies for that, correct?
RTC five money, but it's RTC policy that requires this. We use the federal guidelines. We're not mandated by the federal government.
Is RTC five plenty available for existing roads for sound mitigation?
No, there is not.
Such as Becharan Boulevard?
There's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Just to be clear, on six, seven, and eight, we were not originally going to offer them included in this deal with putting up a sound wall, but we thought, well, if we don't offer it to them, then we're going to hear from them later, they're going to get, why didn't we get a sound wall? But Doug, not everybody responded in those areas, just half of them did.
I apologize for my lack of understanding on that.
I mean, isn't that, I'm just asking. Yeah, they didn't, they didn't all respond, so, you know, you could say it was 50/50, half of them don't care, and the other ones.
I didn't see anything at barrier eight, the multi.
Yeah, barrier eight, didn't see anything at all, yeah. Okay, and I tend to believe, or go along with Mike, there is no legal responsibility to build those walls. And on the other side, too, the walls that we are legally required to build, if they become excessively expensive for other reasons, we don't have to build those either.
They do have to meet that feasibility, and we certainly take a look at that. How and when we get prices, if we were to move forward on this, is yet to be determined as well.
Mr. Salerno?
Yeah, just to clarify, reading these, I see where the homeowners associations do not want to have responsibility for the traffic side of the walls. Are any of these walls, in his motion, going to be the responsibility of the City of Sparks to maintain the traffic side as far as litter, debris, whatever?
Barrier one is, barrier one, unless it was determined through the process that it was the responsibility of the individual property owners, then it would be the City of Sparks, because it will be on that line between Sparks right-of-way and the property owners. Just barrier one.
Thank you.
Okay, motion, Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I would like to make this as a motion that we have, take forward to the RTC, barrier one, two, 3A, and five.
Do you have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay, moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to bring forward a recommendation to RTC, barriers one, two, and three, one, two, 3A, and five. Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, with the caveat that what our attorney warned us about 3A, in other words, you have to take a, look at the legal aspects of cutting a lot in half and whatever else that wall may do.
Is that okay with a second, sir?
Yes.
Okay, there's motion on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Doug. Do you want to speak? Wait for Doug to.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, next is considering, you want to do Pete's six, 10 through six, 14?
Yes, please.
All together? Okay, six, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 are all photovoltaic projects. Go ahead.
Great. Pete Echard, City Engineer. The following five agenda items are associated with our ongoing efforts to increase renewable energy generation at our public facilities. And the projects include four parking lot photovoltaic shade structure projects, two at the police department, one at the rec center, gym at 118 Richards, and one at Larry Johnson Community Center. It also includes a ground-mounted photovoltaic project at Golden Eagle Regional Park. These five projects are all contingent upon the city receiving a solar generations contract from NV Energy. And the top priority project for us out of this list are the two at the police department, where we have secured ORA funds for a portion of the first phase of construction. NV Energy solar generations application period opens on Wednesday, April 21st, at 12:00 noon, and is on a first-come, first-served basis. There have been a couple of significant changes to the program this year, I want to kind of go over a little bit. One is that the applications to be deemed complete must include a solicitation for the installation. So to be absolutely safe, we are presenting these contingent contracts for your consideration. The second significant change is that public facility rebates have increased from a 30-kilowatt maximum to 100-kilowatt maximum at a rebate level of $5 a watt. So it's basically gone from up to $500,000 rebate per project for 100 KW system, which all the applications we're turning in today are. The downside is that the initial year, there is only approximately 800 kilowatts available statewide. And the following two years have 900 kilowatts, and then 1,000 kilowatts or a megawatt of capacity available for public facilities. So this application period, which begins on Wednesday, covers the next three years of rebates. And I don't know how, you know, long it's going to take to fill up, it could fill up in minutes, we just don't know. So we're trying our best to be prepared for any contingencies, to try to get as many applications in as we can for the next three years. As stated in the agenda report and on the contractor's proposal, these projects will not go forward until financing is secured. If we do not receive a solar generations contract, we will bring forward a smaller project at the police department to utilize only the ORA funds that we have available. The contractor is Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., who was selected through a public cost-per-watt bid that was approved by the council in December of 2009. And the contractor is also currently doing the two photovoltaic projects at fire station four and five under this contract. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Smith?
We do have the money, and they've already started on the fire.
Those are our end of construction, and we do have the rebates approved.
I saw them working on it in the other days, and so that money's already secured.
Yeah, the way the funding on those is working is we're going to get rebates for those, once we're completed, and the remaining, and it doesn't quite cover the full cost, but the remaining cost was actually the rebates we got from Larry Johnson for the rooftop system.
Any further questions? Okay, I do have a public comment, so Buzz Harris? You have three minutes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I guess it's afternoon.
It is.
It must be Monday. Council members, Buzz Harris here on behalf of the Associated General Contractors. First of all, I want to compliment this in City of Sparks for very innovative ways to do a lot of different things with very little money that came from the stimulus package, and I think sharing that with other municipalities here in northern Nevada is very innovative and a great idea. Just a question that I have here is that, you know, that, and the reason I'm even here is the fact that this came up, that there's five projects that were on the agenda that are all there and going to the same contractor. And I think as a concern that we have in the industry is the competitiveness and the fact that the same contractor would receive all the same projects, whether it's an agency member or not. So with that, and looking through this, and maybe it's naive as to how this came about, is, and there was, there were two bills that occurred in the 2003 legislature that talked about indefinite quantity contracting or job cost contracting, because these are done on a unit price basis, based on the kilowatt. And so with that, it creates an interesting situation, that is, is this really based on the job, or is it based on the indefinite quantity that's there because it's in a unit price? And is it a legal thing to do? Both of the bills that were presented in 2003 were killed immediately because of the fear of this indefinite quantity type of contract that takes place. And that could come through on other things, whether it's concrete or asphalt or whatever it might be. So I just bring this to your attention as a, as a something that's, is it legal, and could anybody be getting themselves in a difficult situation? So just for your review and to consider. But I think we support the idea of the innovative ways of going out there and getting these types of jobs and the opportunity to put people back to work and do good things for the citizens. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Buzz. Pete, any comments on that, or Dan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I am joined by our purchasing manager, Dan Maron, to address that.
I knew I came messed up for a reason. With regards to this particular bid, we did purposely bid this as a unit price contract, because we were unclear as of November, December last year, when we put this together, where funding was coming from. We knew we had a pot of our money, we knew we had a potential pot of money from NV Energy, we had no idea where CIP was going to go. And so in an effort to provide a solution to Pete, we came up with the concept of providing a cost-per-watt bid. And we designed it as such, we advertised it as such. This advertised back in October, and I can tell you, right at the very top, we declared, City of Sparks is seeking a bid on a cost-per-watt basis for complete and installed turnkey individual photovoltaic systems, ranging 35 kilowatts to 100 kilowatts. And we go on and talk about base assumptions. We were very clear from the outset back in October, this is what we intended to do. Now, we received 11 qualified bids, and we awarded, obviously, to Steve C. Hamilton, Inc. We did that in December, and we've since awarded two contracts based on the original bid. I can tell you that in the process of bidding this, we had multiple conversations with the Labor Commissioner in how to advertise this, because there were concerns with regard to the our money versus standard state monies, and how we deal with prevailing wage versus Davis Bacon prevailing wage. And so we bid it both ways. We looked to cover our bases every which way we possibly could, so that we would have a usable product for public works going forward as money became available. And so with respect to this one, I almost see this as a commodity bid. We are bidding the cost of solar panels and the associated equipment to go with solar panels. And yes, there is a labor component, but we covered our base with regard to the labor component by specifying prevailing wage, by advertising the PWP or Public Works, it's a state number, tracking number for the tracking of wages. We, every time the council awards a contract under that original bid, we report to the Labor Commissioner saying, okay, here's project number one, project number two, this is the cost, this is the scope, this is the contractor. Okay? This is not unlike other bids that the city has done for street cut. We do an indefinite quantity on street cut contracts as we need to, as does the City of Reno, we actually follow their model. We do it for emergency snow removal services. Again, you have no idea how many hours you're going to call them for, but you know you're going to call them at some point, and you need a base hourly wage to rent the equipment and pay the operator. So we don't see this as anything dramatically different. We are respectful of the agency's concern with regard to, you know, throwing this open to many other services. There are public agencies in other states that I'm aware of that do a complete, what they call job order contracting book, where they're bidding everything on a cost per square foot, from painting to carpet replacement to roof replacement. And we're not looking to do anything like that. Our intention here was to provide a model so that we can go forward and chase some energy money, since others have it and we don't. So with that, I'm.
So having said all that, you think we're within our legal rights?
I believe I am, but I'm not an attorney.
Okay. Anything from the attorney? Holiday Express.
You know, Mr. Harris is always, in his organization, I think, have done a tremendous job for this community, and I think they're always up on the law and up on the current issues. With that being said, I'd certainly like the opportunity to look into this and get back with, to work with our purchasing director, and then get back with you on this.
Okay.
My only concern, I guess, is on the timeframe. Obviously, like I said, we're opening up on Wednesday, and if we delay this, we could really put ourselves in a bind. But I mean, I'm obviously, whatever.
I think if the attorney thinks that we could put ourselves in a bigger.
And I just found out about this in the last half an hour, so I apologize for not having time to.
We can expedite this.
So can we go ahead and approve these today, Chad, with the caveat that you're going to look into this and make a decision?
I'm with Mr. Echard, it would have been nice to get a little bit greater heads-up on this. I'd recommend that we go ahead and approve it today, and then I can always get something out to you fairly quickly, in the event that we have to withdraw that, or maybe we have a special.
So we can always withdraw the bids.
If I may, given that your award is pending funding, you may as well add a tag-on statement pending it meets the review of the city attorney.
Okay.
Plus, we've already awarded two contracts under this.
Yeah, okay. So in for a penny, in for a pound? You know, I agree with Chad, we would have liked to know this sooner, but you know what? We didn't, and we'll have to deal with it, so. Ms. Ratty?
So I guess, first a question, my original question, and then added emphasis. So I guess first a question, my original question, and then add an emphasis on the urgency. I mean, the Solar Generations is, it's a gold rush, for lack of a better description. And if, you know, I was going to ask if you wanted another set of hands at a computer or ears on a phone, just to be, you know, as many people in line to get these in as possible, because I do think it's important for the city to do what we can on Wednesday to make sure that we get an allocation that benefits our citizens. My question is, if we had the money secured, would you have bid this all as one contract?
There's a couple of things, I guess, that keep me, it's a tough answer. I mean, this is not going to be our typical method of award. I mean, I don't look, as Dan said, to want to do unit contracts for everything and just make life easy for ourselves, because I don't think that's the best for the contracted community. I don't think it's the best for us. But this really kind of gave us flexibility. You know, we didn't know which projects were going to be funded. We had no idea, you know, where the money was going to come from and what, and the timeframes involved. I mean, this Solar Generations rebate program has twisted and turned, and it seems like every week it's something different. I mean, now all of a sudden, you know, Wednesday opens up, go, you know? And so it gave us the flexibility to do those types of things. I would not probably bid them all together, except at the same time, I have very limited staff. And so if I was to bid all of these projects individually and have a separate project going out and a separate contract, that's a lot of time from a project management standpoint that truthfully, we don't have. So it is nice from that standpoint that I'm putting them all out at once. So it's a tough answer. Like I said, I don't want to make this the typical way we do things, but at the same time, I think it gave us the best flexibility in the situation we're under.
Well, you know, I've stayed in relatively close contact with Mr. Etchar on all of the solar work. And I can tell you that every time I talk to him, the rules have changed, either from NV Energy or from the funding source. And so I understand the need for the creative thinking and the flexibility. I applaud it. I think Mr. Harris from the AGC recognizes that as well. This is a unique situation. And so I want to emphasize however we can move forward on this, let's keep moving forward. And if we have to take a couple steps back later down the road, we can always do that, hopefully.
It's also worth pointing out that this contract has become a model for other local agencies in that I've had inquiries from at least a dozen, both public and private, looking for copies of contract documents so that either they can do their own bid or they've chosen just to join on to the city's bid, which is allowed under NRS, where they get the same contracted rate for similar services. And I can tell you that I can think of at least four agencies off the top of my head that have said they're going forward with that. So we actually became the leader in the area with respect to this contract.
Doesn't surprise me. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dan, you brought up my point that I was going to make, is that, you know, in the state of Nevada, jointer contracts are all over the place for everything, whether you buy one police car, 100 police cars, you know? You can do, I mean, we can copy each other's bids and stuff. And we go back to October with this thing that it was imperative that we got going. It's a cost saver, and we didn't know where the money was going to come on in. And I think that the way that the other, some of the other government operations, that we have a very good shot of pulling, you know, it appears if we're only going to do 800 megawatts, there's going to be eight projects plus that come through with this. We have a good chance of pulling up a lot the first year, you know? A chance of all five of these being approved, because I don't think some of our other government agencies are out there that far ahead of the ballgame to go ahead and get things done. So we may not have another shot at doing it by later on. So I recommend continuing with the city attorney. Let's make the vote on it. Let's get going. Let's see what the legal opinion of it is. And if it passes a mustard, let's roll the dice and make things happen here. You know, this is $2.6 million with the money getting out there in the community. I'd like to see us get it out for our citizens. Thank you.
One quick clarification is, for the first year, the most we could probably get is two projects, even if things went just perfectly, because they have one rule in the new regulations that says that one agency can't have more than 25% of the available capacity. So 200 would be the maximum, we'd get the first year. But at the same time, they're putting out all three years all at once. So we could get all five, I mean, if everything went perfect, over the three years.
Unless we get our first two this year.
Certainly, certainly won't get them if we don't try. So can, we do a motion on all five of these at once? Chad, do you have a problem with that?
No, I don't.
Okay. So looking for a motion, Mr. Salerno.
I'll check some of this.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it. I said yes.
Well, there's a lot of variables here, but I'm going to, let's make a motion to approve Agenda Item 610, 11, 12, 13, and 14 as outlined.
Do you have a second?
With the caveat that if this is approved, that our city attorney looks at it and gets back to the city council and lets us know his findings.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Agenda Item 610 through 614. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, Buzz. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Okay, 6.15, consideration and possible approval of fiscal year 10 federal fiscal emergency management performance grant. Funds for continuance of the city's ongoing emergency management efforts. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, and in this case, your Emergency Manager, for the record. This is an ongoing program that we've been very fortunate for the last six or seven years to have received funding through the federal government, passed through the state emergency management function to help assist us with offsetting some of the costs of our emergency management programs. This allows us to do some of the drills and in the past, have paid for some of the salaries and some equipment that we purchased in order to try to stay as trained as we can. And so this is just the time for the annual allocation. I will mention that we were fortunate this year and that in the last couple of years, we've received between $62,000 and $64,000 total grant. And we were actually given the benefit of $80,000 this time, which we may not spend all of it due to the fact that it is a 50% match, but we'll do the best we can with staying within the budgetary guidelines that we have to maximize the emergency management effort that the city does. With that, I'll answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the acceptance of the state's division of emergency management, emergency management performance grant for the federal fiscal year ending September 30th, 2010, in the amount of $80,271.
Mr. Salerno?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Salerno to approve Agenda Item 6.15. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously with those present.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a moment?
Sure.
Thank you again, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, and your Emergency Manager, for the record. I did want to let you know that this grant has really helped us do a lot of things. And the commitment of the council and the manager and the management team to do emergency management has been very serious for us. We take it serious. We've had numerous events. Your staff has been going through some mandatory retraining and training in the last two months. So we have probably folks that are more prepared for an event than pretty much anybody else in the area because of the commitment that your staff and your management team go to. So I just wanted to thank them publicly on behalf of me as the Emergency Manager with your blessing. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, 6.16, consideration and possible approval of direction for the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project by amending FY 0910 CIP to include construction of the I-80 Sparks Boulevard westbound off-ramp culverts. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Dynamic duo, both of you in ties today. That's a little over the top for me.
A little much for you. Chris Cobb, Capital Projects Manager for Public Works, and Andrew Hummel, Civil Engineer for Public Works. We're actually here to talk about 616, and we can talk about 17 and 18 that follow up with this. What we're asking for this evening is the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project, amending this year's CIP to move forward with construction of a culvert and channel with the Endot project that is currently in process and under contract, as well as amending the CIP to use funds to start appraisal services for the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project. This first item is asking for your approval and direction to amend this year's CIP. We do have available funding within the funding source, which is part of the ratepayers and quarterly payments that they do make. So there are funds there. It just was not originally in this year's CIP because we didn't know that this was going to happen. This has come forth with the Endot project, also keeping the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project on course. We want to go ahead and get the appraisal services moving forward. With that, we did get bids in on the box already. That's the next item that we'll be looking for approval on. That came in well under what we'd estimated, I believe it was 100 and...
36,000.
136,000, as well as we have gotten RFPs in on appraisal services, and that's about approximately $100,000. So it's about $200,000 less than we initially thought it would be. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to...
Questions, Mr. Carrigan, go ahead.
Chris, on this, we were talking about bonding for some of the money for the North Turkey Drain, and we're not going to do that. So this is coming out of the sewer fees? Is that it? We're going to just do a...
No, sir. This is actually coming out of the fees that we're currently collecting. It's about $541 a month for the flood project.
Yeah, we were going to bond for $100 million, I believe, or 80 million, to do the whole thing. But that was, we were not doing that anymore. So we're going to do this as pay, we're going to pay as you go, basically.
This is one portion we're looking at right now to pay as you go. I believe there's still future decisions made on the rest of the project, which right now, we currently estimate is actually about 40 million.
So we have this money already saved up?
Yes, sir. It's in the bank as we speak.
Plus, we may still have to bond down the road, depending on what happens with the flood project.
Depending on the flood project and your direction.
Well, that's right. But this is supposed to be counting as part of our 100 million into the flood project.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Salerno?
Chris, this is done in phases, right? This is all going to be done in phases?
Ideally, well, the North Turkey Drain project, when the design is complete, it could be done in phases, and it may not be. That'll be a decision by the council how we actually...
And it still has to go out to bid and...
Go out to bid, correct. This portion is actually, it's a small overflow channel that is underneath the Sparks Boulevard off-ramp. Within not doing a current project, a crack and see project on Sparks Boulevard and this portion of the off-ramp, it makes ideal sense to get in here now with their contractor or they're already doing the traffic control. We save about a couple hundred thousand dollars in permits and additional construction work if we went out after they leave this project.
Good. That's the way to do it. Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
And you just said it. This is an opportunity for us to get in and do it now. We're planning on doing it now, but because of the construction they're doing on the off-ramp, it's the best time to do it and it's cheaper.
And we save money.
And we save money. And we still, we're still, I would think that the whole thing is going to go in all at once.
Sure.
But we'll see when we get there. And hopefully, this time, make sure we're building the rest of it.
Sure. And with this item, we're just, we're asking for your approval for that direction. The next two items Andrew will speak to, we'll disclose as far as the Endot doing the agreement and the permit and purchasing the box, which we are still waiting for final permit from Endot. And then, once that is done, then we would actually move forward with doing the change order with the contractor, as well as actually purchasing the box. So the key thing there is the finalized permit in our hands.
Okay, any other questions on 6.16? Let's do these one at a time. Okay, if there's no questions, looking for a motion on 6.16. Mr. Smith?
You know, before they bury that, I'd like to see it, because people don't realize how big it is.
Sure.
You just want to get on one of them...
Make a road trip, yeah.
You just want to get on one of them excavators and dig a hole.
Yeah, I'll do that, too. I move to approve the FY 910 CIP amendment and direction in the amount of $1.1 million for the North Turkey Drain Realignment.
Do you have a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve 616, the change in the CIP. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.16, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement in North Turkey Drain Realignment Project I-80 with westbound on-ramp with Nevada Department of Transportation. Any further discussion on this? Andy?
Yes, we do need to disclose, the interlocal agreement spells out a cost of $607,870. That number is based on the contractor's estimate, which was provided and is attached to the item that also includes $40,000 for inspection and testing through Endot. At the time, we put the staff report together and the discussions with Endot, $40,000 was decided on, just a rough number from previous projects. That number's actually come in at $22,000, but we didn't have time to redo the interlocal agreement and such. So that $18,000 is in the interlocal agreement with Endot. However, it's, the amount to spend with the contractor is nailed down. So that would be, you know, if we get into a situation, you know, a construction issue or something that could be funded through that, that would be available, but it's not included in the initial change order through Endot.
Questions for Andy or Chris? Okay, if no questions, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement for the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project I-80 Sparks Boulevard westbound off-ramp culvert installation and channel improvements with the Nevada Department of Transportation as outlined by Public Works staff.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the interlocal agreement, Agenda Item 6.170. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.18, consideration and possible approval of the purchase of a box culvert for the I-80 Sparks Boulevard westbound off-ramp. Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, once again, this item is for purchasing the actual box to go under the off-ramp. We decided to bid this separately. Pretty much everything else that's in the change order and the interlocal agreement with Endot was already part of the Endot contract. However, they did not have a line item for a box culvert of this size. Reviewing some of the previous costs that Endot has received on just materials alone for a box of that size, they were looking about $500, $600 a linear foot. We decided to go ahead and bid that separately so we could keep it a public bid. We did receive two bids. In doing this, we also had to do a public interest findings for Endot and Federal Highway Administration to show that this, buying it separately as we did, was in the public's best interest.
Questions on 6.18? Mr. Smith?
Well, I'll make a motion, but I just want to point out that this is a local contractor that won the bid.
Yes, both of the contractors that submitted are local.
Okay.
Bonus.
Bonus, okay. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the purchase of box culvert for the I-80 Sparks Boulevard westbound off-ramp portion of the North Turkey Drain Realignment Project with Hydro Conduit Corporation on the amount of $136,967 and a nickel.
Mr. Salerno?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve 6.18, purchase of the box culvert. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen.
One thing to add, as you said, they're a local contractor. They're actually both Sparks businesses, too.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for that.
Double bonus. Thanks, boys.
Thank you.
Looking forward, the next time I see you both in ties, okay? On the same day. Okay, 6.19, consideration and possible approval of a settlement in the Victorian Partners case, number CV0802435, Second Judicial Court. Mr. Crutts and Ms. Stone.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the council. For the record, Neil Crutts, Community Development Director, here today with our outside counsel, Michelle Stone, with a proposed settlement. A proposal came from Victorian Partners to have the city of Sparks pay a total of $865,280 for acquisition of the subject property. I don't know that there's that much more to say here today, other than to answer your questions. We have spoken to you at length in the past about this. And if you do have questions, Michelle is certainly here to answer.
Okay, questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure we get on the record that the law says that we can pay 15% above appraised value, and we're paying more than 15% of appraised value for the property.
In the context of litigation, we also have, in addition to the eminent domain case, where we're considering valuation of the property itself that we're acquiring, there's also a counterclaim with breach of contract. So, this amount would serve to pay for the property acquisition, as well as a full settlement and release of that counterclaim.
But we're paying more than 15% above appraised value for this property.
It's also, the amount that we would be paying is also for settlement of the lawsuit, not just the property.
It's being structured that we are paying more than 15%. I've gone on record before, I'm going on record publicly, that, you know, I'm against just settling a case out of court for more than what we're allowed to go ahead, and statute says we can, we can offer for the property, and I think this is a tremendous waste of taxpayers' money, and I think it sets a precedence that we should not be doing. And I think that, in all honesty, you know, this is probably the last condemnation this city will ever do, because I think it's been a nightmare from the very beginning. We're off-base where we started from, and I think we should be a lot more respectful of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
So, this is not just paying 15% more than the property's worth. This is, again, settling a lawsuit, correct?
Yes.
So, which, which if the lawsuit goes forward, we may end up paying more than what we're settling, trying to settle.
Yes, the property owner's claiming in excess of $1 million.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Ratty.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to accept a settlement proposal from Victorian Partners in a total of $865,280,000.
Mr. Salerno.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve the settlement, as outlined by staff. Questions? Mr. Carrigan.
I just have a comment. I'm going to support this, but I just wanted to bring up the fact, this is part of the reason I don't like using eminent domain. I said this a year ago, that we could, I think, I believe that you could reach this settlement on this just by negotiation, so that's why I'm not a big fan of eminent domain, because it seems like every time we do that, this is what happens, and it's a long, drawn-out process.
Mr. Smith.
You know, this is a tough deal for me. I will support the motion. I don't agree with it at all. I'm just taking our attorney's advice, so...
You know, it's very tough, there's no doubt about it, but having sat in the settlement, in the settlement negotiations, I seriously think this is in our best interest. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4-1, Mr. Schmidt against. Okay. Thanks, Michelle, for all your hard work on this thing. I know it wasn't, it wasn't easy, wasn't fun. Sean, are we going to do a closed door?
Yes, sir.
So, we can do a motion to have the closed door after we finish 7.1 public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Salerno.
Make a motion, we hear Agenda Item 7.1 amended to closed-door session.
Mr. Carrigan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Salerno, seconded by Mr. Carrigan to move ahead with 7.1, and then adjourn to a closed-door session. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, wait a minute. I didn't clear the last vote here. Let me do this again. Okay, now, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 7.1 is a public hearing, second reading and possible approval of Bill Number 2618, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of the 2010 municipal elections. Linda.
Yes, this is an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of a primary and general election. I just want to give you a side note, Linda Patterson, City Clerk, for the record, sorry. A side note, I had a call this morning from Boulder City that was trying to determine how we do our elections, and they called their registrar of voters, and Clark County does not do the service for them. So, they're spending a lot more money on their elections than we are here, and I was able to say what nice consolidation, good relations we have with the people in Truckee Meadows, and so you may be hearing comments from Boulder, trying to get Clark County to do what our Washoe County is doing. I thought it was very interesting to listen to her. So, this is just to pass our new ordinance so that the registrar of voters can do our elections for us, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions? Mr. Carey.
Yes, that was an opportunity to pursue shared services between the county and the city.
Yeah, watch what you say.
Got to love that collaboration.
Global consolidation.
Collaboration is elaborate. Good thing.
Sorry. You know what I mean.
Okay, any further questions? Looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2618.
Oh, wait a minute.
After public hearing.
After public hearing?
Yeah.
Lost in space. Okay, this is a public hearing item. I'm all open to the public for hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith.
I move to adopt Bill Number 2618, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of the 2010 municipal elections, and instruct the city clerk to publish this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Carrigan. Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 7.1, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Ratty. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.1, comments from the city council or city manager. Mr. Adams.
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, getting back to the issue of sewer fees, I sent you all an email. Reno charges 15% as the penalty, but it's compounded quarterly.